Can I have your call, please?
Mr. Serong?
Here.
Dr. Martin?
Here.
Dr. Mario?
Here.
Dr. Polak?
Here.
Ms. Robinson? Ms. C?
Here.
Ms. Winmouth?
Here.
Let's stand for the pledge.
Well, thank you, Board. Tonight, we are super excited to welcome a number of our operations staff members here with us this evening. We want to take this opportunity to formally recognize their efforts in responding to the storms that impacted many of our school buildings over the weekend of August 16th and 17th. These staff members went above and beyond their everyday responsibilities to make a meaningful impact in the midst of a very challenging situation. We have a certificate for each of these staff members to express our sincere gratitude for their extraordinary time and effort dedicated attending to our school buildings with the utmost of care. Board, I would invite you to come out into the middle here and join us, and we will call them up and congratulate them for their efforts. Operations staff, as your name is called, we'll invite you to come forward and receive your certificate here from Brenna, and then be recognized by making your way across the line of the Board of Education and Dr. Calgotti, and just kind of hang up there at the end for a minute because we're going to do a photo when we're done. We have a number of names. We're going to read them all. If you're here, we ask you to come forward. If not, just know if you're tuning in later that we sincerely appreciate all of your efforts. So we'll kick it off with Jay Doris, Gabe Torres, Bill Tiffin, Heidi Brackett, Ivan Rodriguez, John Rogan, Amy Plant, Erin Brown, Dawn Sino, Andre Shancy, Bill Lehman, Joe Michaelunas, Bob Hodel, Jamie Queen, Rosalio Navarez, Nick Fathinelli, Mike Rubolino, Tim Lindsay, Oralia Hernandez, Joe Bennett, Juana Ravallo, Nick Calabresi, Jose Galagos, Mitch Green, Dean Collins, Mike Rohr, Chris Shield, Craig Landorf, and Ava Hernandez de Cruz. Thanks to all of you. Rafael, would you like to come up and join your team for a photo?
Induction of our...
Yeah.
Next item on our agenda is we're introducing our student board members and their alternates for this upcoming board year. Thank you for being here. The Board of Education is pleased to announce a selection of Dewick Mural Litaran, a junior at Oswego East High School, and Kelly Parnell, a senior at Oswego High School, as student board members for the 2526 school year. In addition, the board has selected Joel Tukie, a senior at Oswego East High School, and Morgan Esporn, a junior at Oswego High School, to serve as student board member alternates. We look forward to the valuable perspectives these outstanding students will bring, and we invite the community to join us in welcoming and congratulating them on their appointments. Thank you. We'll say that our former student board members and Kelly was here last year has had a great impact on our district. Whether you know it or not, you know, we definitely listen to everything that you have to say, and let us know if, you know, if we can improve as well. As a board. Thank you. Moving 6.1 Superintendent Report.
Good evening, Board. This evening, first of all, I want to welcome our student board members again to the Board of Education. Your role is extremely important as we center the voices of our students in all that we do. We are an educational enterprise, and for those reasons, this is a powerful statement that this district and this particular Board of Education has led through the years to continue to center the voices of our students. And I really want to give a shout out to this Board of Education of this recognition that when the Board of Education does this, it sends a message that our students' voices matter, and they are at the center of everything we do. Tonight, we also took a minute to pause and extend our gratitude for the operations team. And really, I want to add that for all the other members of our district leadership team, school team, who were part of this tremendous work of responding and engaging in the cleanup and the recovery of the intense flooding of August 16th and 17th that impacted so many of our buildings. Those were countless and many times thankless hours, it felt. And I just want to thank everybody because it was truly all hands on deck from educators who had to shift in terms of their practice to go remote in the first couple of days of school to e-learning, to all the additional changes that happened. So I want to thank them for their leadership. It really exemplifies how we unite in times of challenge and ensuring our schools are safe and welcoming learning environments for all the students. This is directly correlated to the work happening on our schools board. As you know, we are in the first year of our strategic plan, and one of the major objectives of our strategic plan is an effective, long-range facility plan to ensure that our buildings reflect the values and the excellence we believe need to be for our students. Throughout the next month, as you heard, we will be supporting interactive, school-based engagements. Come out and show out and speak your voice, community, as part of the final phase of this facility planning process. These are sessions, and these are an opportunity for every student, staff, and community member, parents to come out and lend their voice, for the people who use our schools every day, to share your voice. We want to know what is working, what challenges you face, and what you hope for in the future. As a way, students learn and the tools we continue to evolve, it's important that our buildings keep pace so we can prepare our students in the very best ways possible. I'll take a bird walk here. Can you imagine if somebody said, oh, we want computer labs in every one of our schools? Well, we'd say, okay, well, that's a little dated. We don't want a computer lab right now. So just as a point of reference, we got to think about how do we prepare our schools to be the schools of the future? And this is that time. Over the last week, we received numerous messages regarding comments and actions in our community. I want to reaffirm, as I did in my communication last week, our district-wide commitment to creating schools where every staff, every student member, every family is treated with dignity, respect, and integrity. This is not aspirational. It's an imperative we must commit to work on. We stand firmly against discrimination, bias, or any harm that undermines belonging and safety in our school. Guided by clear board policies and our district's mission and vision, we ensure we address issues directly to ensure accountability and uphold the values that SD 308 has through our process and commitment to due process. We are taking action now while building sustainable systems for lasting change. We invite you to be part of this discussion. Your perspectives, your ideas, and needs for how we can continue to grow together. Our progress is strongest when it reflects those we serve. Through our story, as reflected in our strategic planning priorities, we are committed to continuing to ensure that every voice shapes our collective future. And with that, I want to welcome board members to add to these superintendent comments in terms of things that we've been celebrating and also opportunities that are coming up in the next month. So please, board members.
That's me, right? We are excited to share that the start of the 12th Annual SD 308 and ServBank Food Drive for the Kendall County Community Food Pantry will be starting on Wednesday, October 1st. Be on the lookout for additional information.
Tomorrow, September 23rd, OHS will host the Panther Marching Band Review. This event will offer the opportunity for several high school marching bands to showcase their halftime performances. Come out to Ken Pickrell Stadium starting at 4:30 PM to support the OHS and OEHS marching bands. And I just want to add a couple of comments to it. I've seen both of these bands over the past couple of weeks. They are, both of our bands are fabulous. You really need to come out and see them. And along that line, if you are coming, they are very short on volunteers for tomorrow. So if you have a couple of minutes and have some time to volunteer at that event, please do so. Thank you.
Our district's deaf and hard of hearing program recently hosted its annual popcorn in the park event. It was a fun and inclusive space for students, families, and staff from across the community to gather and connect.
Homecoming week for both OHS and OEHS kicks off next Monday, September 28th, September 29th. We are excited to see and hear about all the fun traditions our students get to take part in.
The BPAC Bilingual Parent Advisory Committee Welcome Back Picnic was a success. In partnership with the SD 308 multilingual department, BPAC hosted this great opportunity for community members to gather and celebrate 20 years of dual language in our district. We are proud of our dual language program and all the students and educators who have been a part of it for the past two decades.
SD 308 joined with schools and districts across the nation to celebrate Avid Day, reflecting on the positive impact that this program has had on the lives of numerous students and their teachers. We are constantly impressed by the skills gained and goals accomplished by our avid students, and we are grateful for the educators who dedicate so much time and energy to helping students succeed.
Our pride staff recognition program is currently accepting nominations for employees at Brokaw Early Learning Center, Boulder Hill Elementary School, Old Post Elementary School, and Oswego East High School. Nominations can be submitted by students, families, and fellow staff members. Please consider showing your appreciation for staff at one of these four schools by nominating them now through September 26th.
Okay. Thank you, Board, for your support, and that concludes the superintendent's comments.
Item 7.1, the fiscal year 26 budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is that time of the year when we have to approve the budget. It is that time of the year when we have to approve the budget for fiscal year 2026, even though the fiscal year started on July 1st. And as part of the process, we had three committee engagement session, two of them in person and one virtual. And then the board was presented with a tentative budget on August 11th. At the time when we presented that, the budget that we presented was showing a deficit of $3.9 million. And since then, there have been a significant positive shift in the in the situation with our budget. Couple of things that we did. We did, we decided to change our levy strategy, which is that instead of levying what we would have liked to levy in the education fund when we do our property tax levy, we decided to shift some of that levy to transportation to help that transportation fund, which we've had significant problems with, transportation fund. And the reason being that over the last four or five years, we've lost more money in transportation than we've taken in in revenue. As a matter of fact, when the fiscal year for 2025 ended, we actually had to transfer money to plug the negative balance in the transportation fund. Just to be clear, it's not possible to run a fund with a negative balance. And the analogy I would like to use is that of your bank account. It's not possible to have a negative bank account. You have to find the money from somewhere else to plug the difference. And what we ended up doing is transferring money from a different fund to be able to make up the difference. So the significant change that we made, additionally to that, too, we received, we had an estimate of what we're going to get in Corporate Property Replacement Tax. The allocation was not provided to us until after the August 11th presentation. We saw, we were very conservative. We always have a revenue projection. We only projected $1.7 million in corporate replacement fund. At the end of the day, when the state actually gave us our allocation, we received $1,096,000 more than what we had estimated. So the reduction from fiscal year '25 to '26 came in at only $200,000 instead of the close to $1.2 million that we had got. So that was helpful. That helped us to be able to fill in the gap, too. And additionally, we received some funding from the federal government, most likely more than what we had anticipated. That helped. But the critical things are the increase in allocation of corporate property replacement tax, as well as the adjustment in our levy strategy, which is to levy less in education, levy more in transportation helped us fill that hole. So I don't, I don't think it's necessary to go over the same presentation that we gave before. So I just wanted to point out, if you look at the revenue comparison from '25 to '26, the changes that I mentioned before, you will see that change in the increase that we have in local funds, which is where the revenue from the CPPRT is reflected. What you also see, you will see a slight increase in allocation from federal government compared to where we presented the budget in August 11th. And
You're saying a reduction?
No, a reduction in the deficit
Got it.
from the August 11th presentation. So I just wanted to go back and show you the the revenue as well as the expenditure by funds. So if you remember the folks who saw the presentation that we gave on August 11th, we were looking at a net fund, a surplus of only $1 million. Now, with the additional allocation from CPPRT, we directed all of that to the Ed Fund, which helped us increase the projected surplus in the education fund to $2.1 million. Now, the operation fund, the projected deficit is still 1.2. But what is different about this is that we have a significant reserve in the ONM Fund, Operation Maintenance Fund, where we will be able to handle the projected deficit here without any problem. And with transportation, since I mentioned earlier, we changed our levy strategy to levy less in education and more in transportation instead of looking at a deficit of $3 million in the transportation fund. We are now looking at a projected surplus of $531.7 thousand. Now, that is our contingent on making sure that we continue to be efficient in how we run our transportation operation in the district. Then? Question?
I'm sorry. I thought that I had... Okay. So when you look at the total, the total revenue, the total expenses, what changed in the total?
What changes in the total as far as, what fund are we?
The total column.
So the total column is?
Because before, yeah, like I said, we were in a deficit of four. We're in a surplus of one.
Right. $3.9 million deficit. We had, the way we are going to do our levy, we're going to levy more in the transportation fund.
Yeah. Instead of the I want to understand how that impacts that total column.
So what it is, is you have additional revenue.
Like a shift. It doesn't seem like an incremental difference.
It isn't. It's just a strategy that we're using.
So are we getting, are we getting, so we're expecting more revenue for the CPPRT?
Right. A million dollars.
And then are we expecting decreased expenditures than we used, than we were expecting?
No, the expenditure in transportation still stays the same. The difference is that we will be getting an additional $3 million in property tax revenue that will have gone into the Ed Fund that we're now going to levy in transportation fund.
So we're expecting more total revenue?
In property tax revenue.
Than what we were expecting before? And a lot of that would be due to?
We're expecting the same level of revenue. We're just shifting it. It was supposed to go to the Ed Fund. Now we're putting it in the transportation fund because the transportation fund needs it more. At the end of the day, we cannot leave the transportation fund with a negative balance. We have to fill it anyway, just like we did last fiscal year. We have to shift the revenue from Ed Fund, NOONAM, to be able to fill the hole that the transportation fund ended us with. So it's a levy strategy. Levying more in property taxes that will have gone to the Ed Fund is not going into the transportation fund.
Tom, are you asking then, are you asking then what happened to the $3 million that would have been used in the education fund?
Yeah, I'm not quite understanding how that changes the total.
So where can I explain it?
Does it have to do with beginning balance? I'm trying to
No. What we're going to do, we're going to levy, we're going to levy more in the Ed Fund when we do our 2025 levy. Right? So what we decide to do is levy less in the, when we do our 2025 levy and put the, and put the difference of what we were levying into the transportation fund, levy more in the transportation fund to cover the deficit. Because at the end of the day, that's what we will have done anyway. Because when the fiscal year ended, we cannot have a negative unbalance in the transportation fund.
I probably should, I probably should have prefaced this with, I didn't tell you I was going to ask that question?
No, that's fine. That's fine. That's fine.
So I might need more?
That's fine.
More feedback.
I have the previous budget
Right.
summary up, and there was a surplus of 1.06
Right.
million in the Ed Fund. So we're not, are we making cuts to the Ed Fund?
We're not making cuts to the Ed Fund.
No.
What we are doing is, when we do our levy in, when we do the levy in December for 2025, what we will have done is we will have asked for more money in the Ed Fund because it's the largest fund. It's got the most flexibility. But what we are saying is, when we do the levy, we will levy less in the Ed Fund, and we will levy more in the transportation fund to make up the difference. Because at the end of the day, we do not have enough revenue to match up the expenses that we're driving in the transportation fund. So instead of waiting till the end of the year, which is what we did when we bring the
So, so you're saying that that transfer would have occurred post-budget
Yes.
26?
Yes.
Instead, you're bringing it forward to the 26?
Yes. Which is
During the budget process?
Yes.
Which is what you should be doing.
So
Okay. Well, you see what I'm saying. That's why it's like, I don't know where
Which is what we end up, when we bring the the audit, the financial audit, 2025 financial audit, which will be presented in November. You will see that. Because what happened is, at the end of the fiscal year in 2025, we had, I believe, about close to $6 million in deficit in the transportation fund. So since you can, it's like a bank account, your personal bank account. You can't have a negative bank account. You have to find revenue to cover that. What we ended up doing, we ended up then transferring money at the end of the year to plug the hole.
I think, I get it?
So that's what we're doing. So instead of having a $3.9 million deficit at the, at the end of the fiscal year, we're now looking at close to $1 million in surplus just based on two things, two major things. One is the CPPRT, another one is levying more in transportation and levying less in education, which we actually have done before. The last levy, we did the same thing, except it still wasn't enough. The hole was still bigger than, than that. And which is why, when I've talked in public before, I said this process is not sustainable because the majority of
Transportation, transportation. So I think just to be clear for those listening.
Yeah, I was going to clarify. Because the majority of the expenditure that we have in the district is funded out of the Ed Fund, which is why the way the law is written when it comes to property tax levy, you have more flexibility in the Ed Fund than you do in the other funds. But just let's be clear, the aggregate amount that you can levy doesn't go up. It's just a matter of shifting how you levy the money. So since we know that at the end of the fiscal year, we are going to have a deficit. And that deficit, and there wasn't enough money in the transportation fund to be able to absorb the deficit, which we have in some funds. For example, in the Operation Maintenance Fund, there's a surplus there where you can use to absorb a deficit. In the IMRF, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, Social Security, you have a surplus there you can use to absorb the projected deficit. But in transportation, there is no surplus. So at the end of the day, we are going to have to do this anyway. So what we're doing is, as we're planning the budget, we're doing it on the front end instead of doing it at the end of fiscal year.
And I think, to be clear, Mr. Botham, can you talk a little bit about the reason behind the heightened cost in transportation? These are not due to
It's not from lack of, it's not from management. It's just that the cost of running transportation has just gone up significantly. I can talk about the fact that pre-COVID, you used to be able to buy 72, 77 passenger bus for about $90,000. The same bus today that we bought, actually at the end of last fiscal year, we paid $165,000 for the same bus. Because the stop, the cost of manufacturing those buses have gone up. That's one reason. The other reason is, pre-pandemic, we had our bus drivers who were part-time workers. They worked two hours in the daytime, in the morning to drop off the kids. They worked two hours in the, at the end of the day to drop off the kids at home. But what we found out, those folks were retired folks. They were retired. And they did that just to have something to do a couple of hours in the morning, a couple of hours in the afternoon. And most of them were negatively impacted most with the impact of COVID because they had underlying health problems. So we lost a number of them, and the ones that were left, they were just too scared to drive school bus anymore. So there was a shortage, and it's not just here. It's actually all over the country and also in Canada. You have that situation. So what we've had to do is to make what used to be part-time jobs now full-time jobs. We had to make it attractive to folks who ordinarily would not drive school buses to drive school bus by giving them six hours minimally. Three hours in the morning, three hours in the afternoon. When you do that, though, you're required to provide benefits by law. If you remember ACA Affordable Care Act, when someone is working six, six hours a day, they're required to get health insurance. So now we've had to provide health insurance, which were benefits we didn't have to provide before. Additionally, based on Illinois law, if an employee is working Additionally, based on Illinois law, if an employee is working six hours or more, they're now entitled to 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 retirement benefit. Which means now we have to enroll them in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. So if you add the cost of all those, additional costs for health insurance, dental, vision, that we didn't have to offer before. Additional cost of providing pension, which approximately is approximately ten percent on top of their regular salary. And it's just, and the cost of fuel has gone up. So the cost of everything has just gone up significantly. And so we just, we've been trying to manage, we just and. Lay it on top of that, I can't forget that, is that we get reimbursement from the state. The state has been prorating what they should give us back in reimbursement. Just last year, the amount of reimbursement we received from the state for regular Ed transportation was seventy nine cent on a dollar. Every dollar we spent, they gave us seventy nine cent back for regular Ed. For special Ed transportation, every dollar that we spent, we got seventy one cent back. Starting in fiscal year twenty six, which is the year they're winning, that amount has gone down. Where we're now getting sixty nine cent on a dollar that we spent on regular Ed transportation, sixty one cent on a dollar. For special Ed transportation. So the ironic part is as costs continue to go up, the state is actually giving us less amount of money in the way of reimbursement. They never reimbursed us dollar for dollar before.
And we're a heavily bust.
Right. So the cost of everything is going up, the the cost of reimbursement is going down.
Thank you.
So that's just, it's just part of part of the situation. And then the other part that I want to point out that I've been driving up cost is, for the most part, everyone who needed transportation would provide a transportation, whether they were eligible or not. And by state law, only three classes of students are eligible to receive transportation. Students who live beyond one point five miles, students who have I E P with transportation specifically called for in the I E P. And then students who live in designated hazardous. The only people, even with all those qualifications, we only getting cents on the dollar. Now, when we allow everyone who's not even eligible to write transportation, then the cost of providing that is going upside down. And if we only allow folks who are eligible for.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other question?
I know I derailed it.
I mean, I was expecting questions. That's the whole point.
We hope there are questions.
Well, no, I was just saying, yeah.
Because I I want, I want everyone to be engaged, which is why we have community budget meeting. We we look forward to folks giving us feedback, asking questions, so we can sharpen our pen and make our pencils and make things more optimum. So thanks for asking a question.
Oh, no, well, no, I bet I. Mind make sure everybody else had their questions answered. So if there's any other questions.
I was just wondering about the I M R F deficit. Is that because we have to offer like pension options to more of our employees?
It's actually not a true deficit, and I will explain that to you. The way the law is written for I M R F is that we're only supposed to levy what we need. Pay I M R F expenditure. We're not supposed to levy more. Now, over the years, we've accumulated more in our reserve for I M R F than we are required to. Which can be referred to as excess accumulation. In order to make sure that we balance out what we're supposed to do, we're running a deficit now to make sure we don't have too much in the way of reserve.
Just for this year.
So that was intentional. Because at the end of the day, at the end of the last fiscal year, we had a reserve of close to seven million dollars. We don't really need that. So we intentionally ran, we levy less last year in order to spend it down. Because that's what the law requires. There are some funds that you can accumulate excess amount of money. You're only supposed to levy what you need and spend what you need.
Thank you.
And nobody know their questions? Okay. Any questions? No, okay. Moving on to eight point one, public hearing on fiscal year twenty six budget. Is this? We will have two opportunities for public comment tonight. The first opportunity will be the during the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty six budget, which we are about to convene. If you wish to make a comment about the fiscal year twenty six tentative budget, please do so during the public comment portion of this hearing. If you wish to make a comment about some other matter unrelated to the public hearing, you may do so during the second opportunity for public comment. Please make sure that you noted on the comment card during which portion you wish to speak. We will now hold a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty six budget. This is the public hearing convened by the Board of Education of Community Unit School District three oh eight regarding the fiscal year twenty six budget. At this time, I would like to ask Amanda Satar to give information updates on the fiscal year twenty six budget.
Actually, that's.
That was the update I just gave, I'm sorry.
So the update was. Given by Rafael Alvafemi?
Yes. And it's also a memo that was included there that shows, explains the differences between what was presented on August eleven. Towards what is represented today, the difference in revenue. Just a different. And let's just do a different bottom line going from deficit to now a slight.
Great. Bren, are there any public comments?
I have one, Mike Lippman, but it might be for a regular public comment.
No. Excuse me.
So that'll be for the next one we get to the regular public.
Like is this for the public?
Okay.
Okay.
Dominic, for the budget, once we do a public comment, we open it, if there are no comment, then we close.
At this time. We will close the public hearing in the fiscal year twenty six budget. Okay. Nine point one. Opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. And this is where we have public comment, so. All right. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback received from our members of the public and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Individuals' interest in speaking to the board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented it to the Secretary of the Board. When the secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name for the public record and provide your feedback. Please note that comments are limited to five minutes per person. The board does not participate in discussion during public comment. Comments should address the Board of Education as a whole and not be directed to an individual board member, audience, or staff member. Follow up on your questions or concerns may be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card. Thank you.
Mike Lippman.
All right. Hello, everybody.
Hello, Mike.
Uh, thanks for allowing me to speak today. My name is Mike Lippman. I'm here tonight not as a parent, but as a taxpayer, a bit related to what we were just talking about. I'm resident of Lincoln Prairie. Lincoln Prairie is a senior community, the intersection of Viola and Route thirty. We're one of, I believe, four senior communities in this district. Lincoln Prairie has currently three hundred homes, growing to eight fifty, and we're going to have about sixteen hundred senior voters, more in that in the moment. As with most senior communities, we're not allowed to have school age kids in our homes, that we sign an agreement to that fact when we move in. We get no direct benefit from the schools, and the school district manages no expenses from us. Despite the fact that most of us are retired and on fixed incomes, we pay the same high tax rate that everyone else does. And the tax dollars that we pay to the schools comes from our retirement savings. Think about that for a second. Now, in the last few months of these board meetings, we saw a presentation on the upcoming maintenance costs of the school buildings. Which the district doesn't have the money to pay for, it was discussed at that meeting. We've seen a couple of meetings on the budget and the budgetary issues, don't need to go into those. And then two meetings ago, your consultants were talking about changes that could be made to the existing buildings. The common item for all these things is a significant need for money from us, the taxpayers. Now, I'm assuming a tax referendum is coming in the next few years. In fact, it was a bullet item from your last consultant's presentation. It'll likely be done in a minor election year, like twenty twenty seven, to try to keep the number of voters at a minimum, making the votes that do come in very important. Now, for seniors, since from a seniors perspective, understand a few things. First off, unless special accommodations can be made for us seniors in regard to the tax rate for the school district. We have no reason at all to approve any tax increases at the ballot box and every reason to reject them. Seniors are very mindful of their expenses and retirement savings, and we are very active voters. And with thousands of voters in the senior communities, this board needs to carefully decide its next steps on both funding and spending. Now, while you may be interpreting my comments as someone who is anti schools and education, that is not true at all. My wife and I are both college grads. Our two sons graduated from District two oh four, went on to earn both undergraduate and graduate degrees from top universities. I'm definitely in favor of providing the best education possible for students. However, it needs to be done cost effectively and funded fairly. In closing, just a couple of things, I ask you, please, to think of two things. Be thoughtful on how you get your tax dollars. Be mindful of the senior communities who can't get any benefit whatsoever from your spending, and we're on fixed income. And second, when you spend the money, spend it as it's not yours, it's ours, the taxpayers. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was it, right? All right. First presentation today, we have an update from Aramark.
Thank you. We're thrilled to recognize Aramark and share some exciting updates about the progress that we made with their team in over the last year. What started as a focus on improving our food service program has grown into something truly remarkable. From major upgrades across the district to a stellar N S L P audit result, and now national recognition from the USDA award. Representing the incredible Aramark team tonight are Patty, Chef Natalia, and Jared. To highlight some of the key wins from this past year and give us a look at what's next.
Good evening. Thank you, my name is Patty Alex Akos, and I am the General Manager for the Aramark account here at School District three oh eight. To my right is Chef Natalia Leschek, and she's our executive chef on site. And our district manager, Jared Hackston, he's also present here today. And we thank you for your time. We're going to start off our presentation here with a kind of a recap of year twenty four, twenty five. It's just a short video. So that was just kind of a quick overview of some of the things that happened last year. We did do some chef pop up stations. We overhauled and revamped the two high school cafeterias in the last two years. Bringing our customized rally cafe, which is a bunch of made to order bars throughout the cafeteria. And what we spent time with, we focused on junior highs last year by focusing and bringing some chef pop ups once a month to them. To kind of prepare the students for what's ahead in the height, what they're going to see in high school. So we did, on our next slide, we'll show you. There we go, our little chef pop up station. So once a month, and we started in February last year for the junior highs, we provided them a taste of what's to come in high school. So one of the bars that we provide at the high schools is our stir fry bar, a ramen bar. We did some made to order paninis as well. So there you see Chef Natalia doing one of the customized stir fry stations, and I'll have her speak to some of the.
Right, so hearing the students' feedback last year about, you know, they want something new, they want something more. So we kind of like said like, okay, well, let's see if students in a junior high school are ready for for what's next, when they're gonna jump into high school. As the high school is really sometimes overwhelming to navigate through the stations open and made to order meals. So I think our biggest one was the ramen bowl and stir fry, where we're just, everybody was just amazed about like, wow, like, it's, it's, it's so unreal. Having a school a stir fry bar or having a ramen bar. So when you think, I think Asian is very popular lately, and we're going to be continuing doing that this year as well. Um, you know, as we approach. April and May, where it was a little bit more of like, you know, summertime and that, we kind of like went easier with the paninis. However, that was still a very popular item too. So we've seen increase with from ten to eleven percent increase in meal participation. Students will come and grab a second entree as being pleased and asking the cashiers or the leader of the school, when's going to be that one coming up again? And we still like, well, we'll have to see and assess the results first, once we implement and doing it more. So this year is more to come. Um, as Patty said before, that the enhancement that we did at the junior high school, we're adding. To the nacho station, more of the toppings, rice, beans. Because again, hearing the students' feedback coming from elementary schools, they're like, okay, nachos, but kind of like they want them to be a bit more filling. Of course, we can't double the serving of, you know, chips and meat and cheese sauce. We just decided, let's just elevate the experience with more flavors. So that's how we end up, you know, adding more rice, beans, beans will be rotating refried or charro black beans. Jalapeno salsa, cheese. What was that there, and sour cream, huge thing, I guess. For that, for the grill station, we had lettuce, tomatoes, pickles. And the funny thing about students grabbing pickles, saying like, well, this is my side of vegetable. Like, nope, that's a topping, you still have to pick your food or vegetable. Amazing thing was with bringing up the little station for the condiments and the sauces. And there's just a huge, wow, they just, you know, unwrapping their sandwiches and they put whatever sauce they want. We do rotate the scratch made sauces on a weekly basis. They're like couple bean standard, the most popular one, and then like me, a sriracha will be swapping with atomic sauce. Or with burger sauce, or three oh eight, or Chick-fil-A sauce, name it whatever, but the great sauce. And spices by the grill, by the pizza with grated Parmesan cheese and everything. All, all of the toppings you might think of were spices, but no salt. So that was great addition, and I think it was going really good, and we keep doing it. So yeah, that was what was last year, the end of the half year, end of the, yeah, end of the last year. And moving forward this year, and probably will get me doing it, because it looks to be very popular and kids appreciating it. Um, and.
So at the end of the school year, we were able to apply for Healthy Meals Recognition Award. The USDA sponsored a Healthy Meals Incentive Innovations Awards. And actually, we were awarded the Innovation and Preparation of School Meals Award. So we submitted three different recipes on behalf of the school district as far as what we offer here and the fresh selections that we use. Part of the criteria that was used to determine the award selection was the use of local produce. The use of the USDA commodity type foods that we offer, as well as keeping the actual state of the product as natural as possible. And the scratch cooking method. So the three recipes that we submitted, the first one was the kale and carrot salad, and that was an accompaniment, a side dish that was featured with our April limited time offer. And the grain bowl, which is pictured there, our Mediterranean grain bowl is one of our rotating test kitchen items. And all of those items within the bowl that the students can choose from are scratch made. So there's a base of the rice, the quinoa, and the lentils, the diced chicken, savory, Greek inspired beef base on there as well. We make a chickpea salad, lettuce, a Greek tomato, and cucumber salad. The chef has had them make some homemade sun butter. The chef has had them make some homemade sun butter hummus and sadiqi sauce. We also do like the pickled onions, as you see there in the feta, as well as the Parmesan whole grain flatbread. And then our last selection is the black chow mein beans, which is a selection that we have throughout the district, and it was actually served today at the elementary schools, which the students really love as well. It's a homemade pico in there as well with the black beans, and so the kids are really enjoying that. So it was nice to get the recognition and highlight some of the hard work that the staff is doing, bringing some fresh selections.
Thank you. Congrats.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So for this year, starting off, we have a lot of new menu items that we're featuring. One of them is offered at all of the locations. It's our new bento box. It's a pimento cheese hummus and a chip bento box, buffalo mac sticks. We have a cubano panini that's offered on our deli rotation, as well as a turkey chef salad that we're offering at all of the locations this year. These are just kind of a snippet of all of the new menu items that we have this year for both breakfast and lunch, and à la carte items as well. One of the things that we are focusing on this year that we started off with, the district was awarded a expansion grant for breakfast. And what that entails is we had 12 locations that were awarded this grant. And the purpose of the grant from the USDA and ISB was to provide more breakfast. What they found was, the reason these schools were selected is that it's based on the percentage of participation of the free and reduced students from lunch versus breakfast. So they saw disparity in the amount of students that were coming in at breakfast time. So part of the goal was to kind of analyze and figure out the reasons why the participation isn't there. Is it like the location of the cafeteria? Is it the timing and things like that? As far as elementary students go, if there's late arrivals, things like that, that might be a deterrent from people coming in just to the traditional method of cafeteria service. So we've met with about half of the principals, and with those schools, we're starting on October 6th, we're still receiving parts of, with the funding, the equipment that we need. So we're going to be setting up breakfast carts at the locations, and we'll be doing a second, a secondary method of delivery for breakfast, so outside of the traditional cafeteria service. So we'll have a breakfast cart, depending upon what works best for the school, if it's at the same time but a different location from the cafeteria at breakfast, or if we're going to model like we did at Churchill, a second chance breakfast at a different time. At Oswego East High School, we're also going to be doing it during, between second and third period as well. Oh, I'm sorry, Oswego High School. So it's going to be based upon what each school wants. So we're super excited about that, for the kids to kind of get fed and have their day start off right. So this is kind of a look at some of our breakfast carts that we have. Currently, the second chance breakfast is, we're still doing that at Churchill as well. The increase in participation, we're averaging somewhere between 50 to 75 additional breakfasts just from that cart, instead of the ones that are coming down into the cafeteria first thing in the morning. So sometimes they get there a little bit late, they're not really ready to, they're excited to talk with their friends, they want to get in line, they're not coming down to the cafe. So we take the carts out to them, and they come out right before snack time, and they can use breakfast as a snack as long as they have not received a breakfast in the morning. So in the cafeteria. I'm going to have the chef talk about our pop-up.
Yes, all the excitements. So this year, we start off our breakfast excitements with pop-ups. As we said, like, okay, last year, we achieved the junior high school with some excitement, and they were waiting for the pop-ups. Now this year, let's do it across the board and for breakfast, because I think breakfast is our target point this year. So we did a waffle bar, which was an amazing pop-up. We ran it in, on the 11th, and we saw participation increase for about 472 meals more for breakfast, just doing the breakfast pop-up for the waffle. The principals were very receptive, they sent the communication to the families and community, and they were like, yay, we're going to get waffles. They got a little bit of, you know, sprinkles and a bit of topping, and it was just different fruits as a toppings. Yes, it was just amazing. Worm cinnamon apples, blueberries, strawberries, and all that. So it was, it was a great, a great morning seeing kids smiling and being happy about about pop-up.
Student board members, did you have a waffle that day? I'm sorry.
No, it's just, the more I go through this, like, the more you go through the presentation, the more it's just like, I don't know, it's just really like making me hungry, so like...
Good.
Like, I haven't had my dinner yet.
The second pop-up we did on the 17th, it was a smoothie day, and I was surprised to see how actually elementary kids are liking smoothies. I thought it would be more popular junior high and high school, but interesting fact. So we served two different smoothies, was a banana-blueberry one and a peach-strawberry. So we've seen that elementary students were so into the blueberry, blueberry one, banana, yes, the color was kind of like purplish, and they loved it. They were like, we have, what, I think, South Bay waiting, kids are like, when the next time pop-up is coming? I'm like, okay, so that's a good one to repeat, I guess. Junior high and high school, they're into like peach and strawberry. So that's that, and it's coming up the Questalaco, we kind of like name it that way, so it's very intriguing. It's a kind of breakfast taco quesadilla. It's something interesting, it's something new, so we'll see how that's going to go. We don't have the feedback yet, but it's the last day of the month, the September 30th. So looking forward for that.
The other thing that we did this year, we started off the school year with our chef video series. So what we did is our first videos as an introduction to our cafeterias, so that you could see. So we made three different types of videos. The first one is our mascot Ace, and we sent this out with our principal communications. And Ace is our elementary mascot, and Ace was teaching the elementary students how to order their lunch and how to go through the cafeteria line. So we started off in a classroom, and we filmed Ace choosing their lunch selections, A, B, C, or D, turning in their sheet just like they would at school, and then coming down how we go through our lunch line, and what we ask for, and how we fill our plates. So we went through that, and it taught them how to do their ordering and getting their lunches. The middle video is the chefs going through the junior highs and walking the students through the different doors and what's available as far as selections, where they would find their topping bars that we were talking about, where the different stations are, and how lunch works at the junior high level. And then we made two different videos for the high schools, as the chefs introduced the different stations at the different high schools. It also fell, it also fitted in with a map of the different stations within the cafeteria. So this would be great for new incoming students as a way that they could navigate their cafeteria, because again, it is really overwhelming when you walk in there and you're new. As a freshman, you don't know where to go, just as a refresher for the older grades as well, what the different options are that we have. So this was our start, and then we introduced our limited-time offer video. So Chef Natalia went through, and every month, we'll explain to the families and the students on our limited-time offers, like how the recipe is built, and we will send those out. The first one went out for September for our chicken fajita sandwich that we featured last week. Our October 1 will be coming out in about a week and a half or so, and it is our cheesy sausage and potato soup that's served with pretzel in honor of Oktoberfest. So we will be doing that as well. And any of the, we're trying to get on a rotation where we can do at least like two videos a month of like the different items that we're offering as a look into the kitchens, so you can see what we have to offer. If it's a local produce that we've been featuring, we started off the school year offering local peaches. We've done watermelon, and I'll have the chef talk about our different local produce that we have been...
Right, that's another excitement thing, and thank you Patty for always giving me the exciting thing to talk about. So yes, I think this is a great opportunity for us to utilize our local fresh produce, and not only. So this year, we're getting yogurt, strawberry yogurt and vanilla yogurt from our Country View Dairy in Iowa. Peaches are from Flemis Orchard in Cobden, Illinois. Ghost-like cucumbers, tomatoes, and zucchini are for the Clains Produce in Burlington, Illinois. Jalapenos, fresh jalapenos, it's a family farm, Fresh Co-op in Rockville, Illinois. So we're proud to partnership with them and bring those, you know, farm to table almost things. So that's, that's exciting. Thank you.
Is that, is that a newer endeavor?
Yes, so the district also received some grant money for the local produce as well, and so we've been trying to incorporate more and more of those as we're using it. We do have produce that we use from a little bit not as local, but we try as much as we can to get that. So we, every week, we kind of go through and see what's available for us to order, and bring new and exciting things in, like we started off with the fresh peaches, which we've never offered before. Now the prop is turning to pears that we'll be doing, and some other different types of melons. So as it comes up weekly, we've been just kind of perusing and partnering with Common Market, who sources from all of the local vendors. So it's been great.
While we look forward, everyone, this school year in the cafeterias, we enjoy our new flavors and meals. Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just had a quick comment. I remember when I came on the board two and a half years ago-ish, something like that, right? There was a lot of discussion about the quality and the value and the experience of students not being kind of up to par with what the board wanted. And I think, based on this presentation, we've come such a long way, and I appreciate all the innovation and all the fresh meals, and all of, all of these ideas kind of coming together. I remember specifically talking about the breakfast carts and making sure we expanded that, so I was happy to see that come to fruition at a grander scale. I think that's, you know, can be really important. And I won't put our students on the spot, but I don't know if they haven't had any experience recently with the cafeteria that they want to share. I'll hand it over to you all.
I just want to say thank you, because I know, I see the time you guys are taking into this, to make an improvement. Here's a taking your time, your effort, your love, and I like really see it, not even on the presentation, but also engaging it at school. I know, like, in my freshman year, I'm like, okay, like, what do I want at school? But now I'm like, oh, I enjoy this. This is like, it brings like pleasure to me. I just want to say thank you, because I see it, I see it happening, and I know it's a lot of work, so thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I also just want to say thank you, and it's actually funny, because today, my friend was, he got hot lunch, so from the cafeteria, and I was like, wow, the food is really upgraded here, like, oh my goodness. What is, I like, I remember back in middle school, like, there was like very limited options, and especially like during COVID, like, there was like, not like, it was not in par with what the students want, but like, now I'm like, what? It's like crazy, like, the options are so like varied and everything, the amount of food's more, like, I'm like, just, I can see the effort you guys put, I'm really happy for you guys.
Appreciate that. Come down, every week it changes, you'll see all sorts of different things. So we appreciate that. Our October menu, October 1st, we'll be celebrating World Vegetarian Day, so our whole menu, we have like vegan chicken nuggets on there for everybody and different options, so we look forward to celebrating with everybody.
As you closed out, just thank you again, I'll just echo that, and maybe give us a couple of names of shout-outs of district partners, because I know that on the management team, there are people you work very closely with to make this a reality, so maybe you want to give them the nod, because we recognize the improvement of our system to make sure that our students get excellent service.
Yeah, we appreciate Amanda and Raphael and all of their hard work and help with us, and Teresa's group over in Communications by pushing out all of the information with us, so we really appreciate that. We're really trying to connect and do the communications to highlight everything that's going on here, so, thank you.
And I can't say enough too, though, about what I, what I saw when, when I got here, was that I remember talking to board members who were there, who were here there, and a number of them made it clear, whatever happened, Aramark is not coming back. What we recognize is that they were no set off for success, they really weren't. They were not a bad company, there was just, the structure that was put in place did not make it possible for them to give their best. So we went back, where we did the R and P, we did it in such a way as to make sure they get the, they can showcase their very best. I remember when we made the recommendations, some board members said, no way. It just wasn't, and we were just like, just give us time. I know it's the same company, it was a different structure, and we had no doubt that they were going to do exactly what you're doing and more. So I'm just happy to actually see that. Thank you.
Erica, Ravell, do you have any questions, or?
No, I don't have any questions, just a comment. I think that we sometimes take for granted or don't acknowledge how, what we serve our students contribute to the culture of the learning environment, and so this makes me really excited, excited to see, and just thinking about my baby at home. I can't wait to go home and talk to her about this, like, so yes, thank you so much.
So you, you talked about breakfast carts and second, second chance carts, and working with the principal to determine whether you're going to do breakfast cart or second. I'm going to continue to try to push second chance carts until our buses are always there on time, you know, until, so I really want to make sure that you're stressing the reason that these second chance carts, you know, are valuable and a great service to our students. So just, I want to make sure that that's vocalized, and hopefully our buses will be seven minutes early every time, and you know, for the, forever and ever, but... Yeah. Yeah, that gives me, that gives me lots of other thoughts, but, yeah, because in those days, you know, like, yeah. No, I appreciate it, but yeah, I also want to acknowledge that it seems like everybody's seeing lots of improvement and substantial improvement at that, and so I thank you. Appreciate it. Oh. Thank you.
And a gentleman at that.
Thank you. All right. All right, we're moving on to 10-2, our strategic plan update. Looking forward to hearing more about this.
All right. Good evening, Board. Next up, we want to welcome with members of our senior leadership team, who will be sharing some reflections on our impact monitoring tool that we've done as we prepare or we've moved into our first quarter of our strategic plan, of our three-year plan that is on deck. So I want to invite Dr. Kinkade and Teresa to lead off.
Well, good evening again, Board. We are excited to bring you our very first impact monitoring report for this school year. We're going to take turns kind of tag teaming the updates here, but just to give you a feeling for where this came from, we've included the full report for your review as well. There are a number of work groups that are working across all the objectives that are currently in play, and we've kind of rolled up all of that work into the five priority areas of our strategic plan, and so you'll see some of the high-level updates as we work through that. We anticipate that as the year goes on, these will become more substantial for you. We're at the very beginning here, so some of these work groups are just kind of kicking off, and a few of them haven't started yet. So I invite our leadership team to popcorn, and we'll fill you in.
All right. Good evening, Board. The first priority we're going to highlight is future ready. You can see that we have illustrated for you some key takeaways of this work plan, and then at the bottom, you'll see all the corresponding slides have the same percentage of whether we're sustaining, developing, approaching, or not yet started. You can see that we are solidly in the approaching area for future ready. Some key highlights is that we have completed and received approval from ISB for our application for the college and career pathway, our first one, and our education endorsement in human and public services. In addition, we've started work on the introduction to education curriculum map and scope and sequence. We have successfully launched the new School Links College and Career Platform. This included communication with staff, students, families, and administrator training, alignment planning, and initial onboarding of students in grades nine through 12. And finally, we've continued to strengthen family engagement and post-secondary planning through partnerships for the College and Career Series, collaboration on a College and Career Handbook, along with our communications team, and communication about the new platform and its features. and its features.
So our district leadership team in partnership with Ann Cummins-Bogan is really leading the work around MTSS. We're focused on tier one for our instructional framework. We're also looking at tier two and tier three in conjunction with onboarding Edjiklima, which we have previously discussed, which is our new data warehouse. We're looking at interventions and the cycle as students move and seek additional support from tier one, tier two, and tier three. And we're in the approaching as we're forming level-specific committees for tier two and tier three, really through the work of our district teams and both content and level-specific work groups.
Additionally, our junior high student support time has been redesigned around these three priorities of social, emotional learning, college and career readiness, and individualized student needs. Assistant principals and counselors aligned character strong lessons with school links to create consistent student-centered experiences. A cohesive rollout plan with professional learning and monitoring will launch district-wide this year. We are currently in the approaching area. Additionally, school leadership teams have advanced their work by sharpening action steps tied to foundational practices and school improvement planning. Principals and teams are aligning efforts across schools to ensure coherence and shared accountability. We are also in the approaching category for this as well.
Priority three, academics. In the coming weeks, our K eight teachers will evaluate student performance data to strengthen our English Language Arts curriculum. Our K five teams will focus on district-wide item analysis to refine lessons and assessments, while grade six through eight teachers will align their revisions to priority standards and IAR expectations, ensuring consistency and rigor across the junior high level.
We're excited that in over a decade, we have self-contained classrooms in special education that will be emphasizing and continuing the work in the curriculum stage. Those self-contained classrooms are DHH, Stars, Rise, ISP, and Skills.
Before we progress forward, I just want to add regarding our school leadership teams, they, I'm sorry, professional learning, my bad, has been built into a phase plan, beginning with a strong structural framework. The school leadership paradigm has expanded to all principals and assistant principals are in their pilot phase with ongoing training, reflection, and collaboration through our boost meetings and work with our Illinois Principal Association. Additionally, culturally and relational response in the curriculum development is also well underway. Phase one of professional learning is nearly complete with resources in progress and a rollout and communication plan being finalized to support educators and families.
In response to priority four, we have made significant strides in working with our community partners, notably ongoing meetings that have been held with OPD, OFD around a full-scale emergency drill, including kind of developing that timeline and implementing those practices. We have had initial training sessions for all administrators on crisis response protocol. We're looking to set up some additional crisis response protocol trainings for our operations side of the house, such as transportation and operations and maintenance. And we are still in the early stages of looking into our security infrastructure audit. And those things will be coming shortly. I think I covered both of those. You cover number, the third one, labor management.
We have expanded our labor management partnerships through weekly union and human resources meetings. My team and myself, we meet with our union leadership every week, some of the unions twice a week when needed, to make sure that we stay abreast of current issues and also in a preventative measure to make sure that we address things before they become issues.
Priority number five, systems management. Part of that critical work that we're doing is the long-term facility. And we are completing phase three right now with the support of Wyden Company, a partner in doing the master facility planning. And we've had a number of community engagement meeting. We had one in person, I believe last, uh, week before last, and we had one virtually last week. So we're working diligently to ensure that we get inputs and voices from our community member, as well as from our staff member, to make sure that the final plan reflects the value and input from all stakeholders. We're very excited about that.
In terms of recruitment, we maximize our postings of openings for high needs areas on both our district, our district website and our Facebook page. We advertised and hosted virtual interviews for bus monitors and TAs. And out of that, 14 candidates did indicate interest in proceeding to the next stage. We also called all bus monitor applicants personally to gauge their interest and schedule interviews and reached out to each individual, Risa supervisor and lunch monitor to find out if they would be open to an opportunity to be a bus monitor in the AM or the PM shift.
One area of focus that we have been really, really making sure we touch is the making available financial information of the district. We've been working on being very, very transparent and making sure that all the information of the district that relates to finances is available for everyone to see. One of the key steps that we took on that, this will be the second year, we've actually engaged in community budget meeting. We had two sessions at two of our schools, different location, representing different parts of the district. We also had one that was virtual, that was available for anyone to be able to jump in. During those meetings, we went deep and provided information about revenue sources as well as expenditure. Goal is to make it as, as easy as possible for our taxpayers to know how the funds in the district has been spent, to let them know that as we believe that the budget should reflect the moral value of the district, we're doing that very specifically, very openly.
In conjunction with some of our local communities and our district departments, RSP has completed both the student enrollment projection report and with the assistance of our building leaders, the building capacity analysis. Rob Schwartz will be with us on 10-6 for our next board meeting to present both of those reports. In a few minutes, we will have kind of the launch to our student assignment. So we'll discuss in more detail the progress that has been made so far.
And finally, related to systems management, one of the, one of the outgrowth of the master facility planning is the recognition of the need to actually engage in preventive maintenance. If you remember, phase one of the master facility planning is the facility assessment, which lets us, which provides us very detailed information about the states of our different equipment that we use to run our building. And in making sure that we get a handle on that, we are, we're actually making sure that we use our ticketing system to ensure that we engage in preventive maintenance instead of the past practice of fixing things when they break. What we are doing right now, we have a pretty good information about when things should be, should be serviced, when should, things should be maintained, and we're following that with fidelity, making sure we extend the useful life of all the equipment that we have in the district through a comprehensive ticketing system.
Okay, that concludes our update for this evening. We are happy to answer any questions you might have in regards to this check-in.
Not yet.
I want to just make sure I'm understanding the numbers at the bottom. Those are the percent of the 25, 26 objectives for our basically year one of the strategic plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And then, um, I'm just thinking about the word sustaining for the, some of the, because this is the first time we've seen this kind of update, right? So I'm thinking about that word sustaining, because when I look at the different, you know, goals or objectives, some of them are like one and done, and some of them are like, begin this, and then next year, we're going to do something else, next year, we're going to do something else. So I don't know, that just doesn't capture for me, I think, some of what the objectives are, like, one of the, I'm just like, I just pulled the strategic plan, evaluate implementation of a shared definition, like, okay, so did we or did we not check? Are we going to continue to do that year over year? And then there's some, you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
So I don't know if that's, I don't know if the verbiage is off or the way it's presented seems off, because I'm, I'm not sure that some of these will be sustaining. It is the goal that 100% will be sustaining, because I'm not sure that that vibes with some of the essence of the objectives that are, if that makes sense.
Yep. And what we're currently aligning the verbiage here too, is really obviously not yet started. Then approaching really is aligned to the planning, because we've talked a lot about we need to make sure that we have comprehensive planning to the developing is really implementing, and the sustaining is the revision, reflection, and review of that objective. So Amy, to your point, we can add some more kind of differentiation between accomplishment and it now goes into that cycle of improvement.
Active or ongoing versus something that's going to be building towards? That's a good point.
I think maybe as a public document, that this is, I think this is a, like a, you know, it's a template of what we're going to be using, right? Maybe a slide for, for the public and for us that just explains what the percentages are, like what those definitions are, and that these are the 25, 26 objectives. And then I think it would be helpful just to understand, to maybe have somewhere like, how many objectives do we have for systems management for 25, 26? Because the percentage, I think, is nice to see progress, but it's also, I think, important to show the amount of work that we're working on, right? Is it 15% of 100 objectives or is it 17% of three objectives, right? So it's just a couple.
That's great feedback.
Suggestion. But I like this, overall, I like this format.
Any other questions? No? All right. Well, Heather or Dr. Kincaid? Should we just say that? It's been brought to my attention that there were a couple missed public comments. And so I think we need to allow those commenters. And so we need to do, we need to amend the agenda.
Can we return to an agenda? Can we return to an agenda?
I think if you motioned to return.
So just having some. So can I get a motion to return to agenda item 9.1? Is that, is that an appropriate motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to return to item, or to agenda item 9.1, public comments.
Second.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmouth?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Murillo?
Aye.
Oh, motion passes 6-0.
You probably want to read the opening again.
I'm going to go ahead and reread that. Give me a second here. On behalf, on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback received from our members of the public and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Individuals interested in speaking to the Board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented it to the secretary to the Board. When the secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name to the, for the public record, and provide your feedback. Please note that comments are limited to five minutes per person. The Board does not participate in discussion during public comment. Comments should address the Board of Education as a whole and not be directed to an individual board member, audience, or staff member. Follow-up to your comments or concerns may be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card. Thank you.
Davida King Brown?
Yep, it's a microphone right there.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me opportunity to speak to the Board. My comment is regarding a staff member that you all have here. There were, there was comment that was made on, by the staff member, who is also a member of the school board of a neighboring school district. The comment that was made was, did not sit well with the community there. I was present at that school board meeting. I heard every comment that was made by the community, by teachers, by students. And it, I did not prepare a speech because I wanted to make sure that my comments were generally coming from the heart. Personally, I would say that if this individual were a custodian or some other level of employment, this could potentially be a non-issue. However, the fact that this potential person is in a position of power when it comes to the hiring and also the retention of staff that's hired here is concerning. It is concerning because this school district has made great strides, and I, I've been a parent here for many years, has made great strides in effort to create that level of diversity, equity, and rightful presence. Thank you, Dr. Waller, for your efforts in, in making that possible. And I think this is a brave setback, when you hear that if a black employee who is identified as black or African-American and has also identified as someone that is bilingual, decides to set their, their application, that it could be a bias against them because of the comments that this individual made. It is, it is extremely concerning considering the fact that we are already a district that although those numbers are growing, it, it is, it is staggering that we have not been able to retain that level of employment when it comes to black, African-American teachers and staff. So because of that, I feel like that individual should not be in the position that they are in. I don't think it is representative of the school board. I don't think it is representative of the parents of the District 308. That is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Kiwana Bularese?
Good evening. Dr. Calgady and elected members of the school board and to the administration that's in the building, as well as to our community members that are here this evening. My name is Kiwana Bularese. I am a parent of District 308, three boys, two have gone through this wonderful system. I have another one who's a senior. I'm also an engaged parent. It was only a, the school board prior to you all, where we advocated parents that we needed a full-time diversity, equity, inclusion director. And so therefore, we advocated for Jadaan Waller, and we are so pleased. This district has come a long way, so we are not going back. I want to piggyback on Davida's comment. Our district has prided itself on being a place where students are given equitable access to opportunities regardless of their background. We know that true excellence in education does not happen when some voices are silenced or when some children are made to feel less than because of the color of their skin or the circumstances of their lives. You can imagine, on September the 15th, I received a notice that in District 131, that there would be a meeting, a call from the Urban League and from the Urban League and a call from the NAACP to ask a member of their board to step down from their position. What does that have to do with 308? It was my surprise that the person also held a position of influence in District 308. What is the, why is that relevant? What is the correlation? The person who held a position is seated in a position of influence. HR is not about just hiring, it's just about compliance. Those people and even the people you all are seated in a position that shapes our culture. And so because this person is seated in a position that can shape our culture, it was very concerning. I called people who sit at the table, they're gatekeepers. They decide who comes in the door, who aligns with our values, that all of our students should receive an equitable access to the best education while they're in here at this school district that will prepare them either to work in a trade or to go off into a college/university. We are preparing our students to be global citizens. I just came back from Europe. There are many students who I ask, how many languages do you speak? Not one, not two, some were multilingual. We want to provide those opportunities for our students, and I believe we do. More important, more importantly, I just want to astole you all as the board members to remember why you were elected, elected. We must ensure that not only voices are not sidelined, but are centered in decisions that affect our students. You all are in the business of making decisions for our students. And we are also in the business of ensuring that our students and that our staff are building a wonderful culture for our students to thrive in. And that is my comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anything we need to do as far as moving on to next presentation item 10.3, student assignment, planning update.
So as Dr. Kincaid prepares, I just want to echo the comments around the strategic plan connected to what you're about to hear in terms of our student assignment planning work. These are all very much connected. The long-range facility plan, student assignment planning work we're doing are all part of the vision that the board really approved back in the spring regarding the work to come. And I want to thank, in advance of this presentation, Dr. Kincaid for leading this next part of the presentation.
So what we're going to focus on in the next couple of minutes is our priority five, systems management from our partnership and collaboration. So the objective that I'm going to launch today is focus on not only our comprehensive analysis, so we'll talk about our student assignment patterns, but then enrollment trends, and finally, our student assignment. So what we started last year was the phased approach to student assignment. The work that was done last year focused on phase one and was implemented this fall with our specialized programs. So we reviewed our specialized programs, both special education and our multilingual learners, to really create hubs of learners to anchor our specialized programs within our district. We had decided over the course of last year that we didn't want to move any students based on attendance zones before we anchored our specialized programs. Now, the work shifts into phase two and beyond. So our immediate focus will be on new growth, where we will look to implement some student assignment changes for a year from now, fall of 2026, and then also really looking ahead. So the focus will be on not only the planning, but the preparation at both realignment and then potentially redistribution. So we want to be cognizant of our current reality of the growth within our district, but also really be planning for the future. So as both Dr. Calgady mentioned and Raphael, we're really looking at intertwining both the partnership and planning of our long-range facility plans and our student assignment. RSP has been our partner for many years related to both student enrollment projections and our building capacity analysis. So we have redone both of these studies because of phase one and because of the new growth. So just to kind of refresh the timeline for our long-range facility planning, what we've done is really partner our student assignment discussion to follow not only alongside, but to with, follow the conclusion of our long-range facility planning. So our long-range facility plan will come to the board in November with action in December. So we're looking then for our student assignment to follow that. So what we're doing is we're launching our committee this month, really to focus on processing the information and discussing different options. As I mentioned in our strategic plan update, Rob Torts will be here in person from RSP to review our student enrollment projections and building capacity analysis with our Board of Ed. We then return back to committee meetings to refine our scenarios, discuss options, and then reach consensus. We have several community engagements planned in November. Then we take that information back to our committees. So our committees will be a balance of committee and work group. So our work group will contain not only building and district administrators, but also parents from our schools, members of our student, I'm sorry, our superintendent advisory committee, and then also staff. And then we will come in January with the recommendations for info and action. The reason why we're recommending this timeline is because, again, kind of anchored in that both discussion and planning, we want to make sure that we have clear guidance and information prior to the launch of student registration for school year 27 and staffing for 27. So that is kind of our two anchor posts of why we're recommending a January info and action. So the focus of our new growth is really on the new growth across of our district. So right now, I'm looking over the next couple of years, the immediate impact will focus on Southbury, Grand Park, Hunt Club, Wolf's Crossing, and the Wheatlands for our elementary. Obviously, then, we will not only look at these schools that are experiencing new growth, but then also where could we potentially also service additional students from schools seeing the largest growth. Our junior highs that are seen and are currently impacted by new growth, Trabber, Murphy, and Benarsik, and then both of our high schools are seeing zones of new growth. So looking to the work of our work groups, so things that we will be discussing, right now, our school that is most impacted by new growth is Southbury. So that will be our primary focus. But as we talk about phase three and phase four, some of the things that we need to talk through is determining priorities. So as we look at in phase three, how we could potentially realign some of our student assignments, we need to decide, do we want to keep our feeder patterns? We have pretty strong alignment currently between our elementaries, our junior highs, and our high schools, with the exception of one elementary. So what are our priorities as we look at student assignment? What would we look at in terms of grandfathering or a phase process if we are moving our student assignments? What would our ATR, our attendance transfer request process look like? What will transportation look like? How will we be able to potentially reorganize some of our student assignment to support our transportation planning? As I mentioned, Southbury, as we talked about last year and at the beginning of this year, is our primary concern based on our current student enrollment projections. But then as we look not only years one through five, but beyond, we do see growth in all three of our levels, elementary, junior high, and high school, and how could that potentially impact realignment and reassignment? So we will be back at our next meeting with the report from RSP, and then we will be launching this month both our committee and our work group. So this was just a preview of student assignments and more to come.
Any questions come up that are important as we think about the next presentation? Amy, Dr. Murio?
I had more of a question on timeline.
Oh, yeah, please.
When, when, when I'm looking at the timeline of student assignment, January 1st, Board of Education meeting, and then action on the second Board of Education meeting in January, we're taking action on just that phase two of reassignment due to growth?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And so what you're highlighting in the previous slide, these are potential schools that could be impacted by those reassignments?
Correct.
What is the difference between new growth and realignment? Can you review that again?
Absolutely. As we look at our maps, right now, we see especially Hunt Club's boundary, Trabber's boundary, and OH's boundary. When our current student assignment zones were determined, most of the kind of large scale of OH, Trabber, and even Southbury was, there was no growth. There was, it was farmed. So the realignment was, is really what we need to discuss is how can we start to look at our attendance zones in advance to start to shift, really kind of from our northeast to our southwest, to be proactive about the growth? So that is what we would be looking at, potential realignment. You know, we've got some attendance areas that decisions were made 10 years ago when different areas, for example, Prairie Point, Churchill, and Benarsik, were seeing large growth, and we've seen our attendance in those schools come down as our homeowners are staying in their homes, but the students are, are aging out, and we're seeing decreases. So as we're now seeing areas of new growth coming really from that Wolf's Crossing corridor and even further south, we really need to reexamine those areas to start to shift to be proactive. So to then kind of repopulate Benarsik, Churchill, Prairie Point, so that we don't see student enrollment exceed the capacity of Southbury and Trabber and potentially OH.
Dr. Kincaid, I have a question about phase one specialized programs, and perhaps I missed it, so I hate to be redundant, but exactly what's happening right now, phase one specialized programs, fall 2025?
Yep.
And what specific specialized programs? Maybe I missed that.
So that was discussed, approved last school year.
Uh huh.
And it was implemented this year. So what we did was we, the focus, and I will invite Dr. Dubiel to supplement, because I'm sure I will miss something. We created hubs for our RISE programs so that students would potentially be able to stay in the same elementary, K5, because previously, we had students that might have to attend multiple elementary during their K5 experience. We also then, the year before, started a third dual-language site at Wolf's Crossing. So what, really, the specialized programs were really to make sure that our specialized programs were in locations to provide the full K5 experience for students. Dr. Dubiel?
So, so last year in collaboration with the OEA, we put two task force together, an ML task force and a special education task force. The ML task force had to consider the three programs that are under the ML umbrella, and the special education task force had to consider the 12 different programs under the special education umbrella. Knowing that possibly we were going to do a review in the future, we didn't want to wait two years because it takes time to do it. So the staff members, the stakeholders that collaborated together identified areas of strength and areas of attention within those programs. And so the ML task force identified SEI, or Sheltered English Instruction, as a program that would be phased out over a number of multiple years. And then with our special education program, it was decided to look at ISP, so previous to last. For example, we had students in the ISP program who went to one junior high, so they did not have an opportunity to attend their home junior high. So we were able to redevelop a structure so those kiddos can go back to their home junior high and be rightfully serviced in their home school. Stars program, which Dr. Kincaid was referencing, we had quite fragmented clusters of grades spread out in seven different schools. We were able to create hubs into five that allowed really deep, hot focus and concentration on related services. It allowed us to increase some of the teacher assistance in some of those self-contained classrooms. The cross cat program at the elementary, it really was a mix of students who were light skills and students who needed more instructional support that were multiple grades behind. So we were able to divide that so that we can have just an ISP program and just a RISE program. So those were some of those specialized programs. And we really focused on ensuring that as best as possible, students were attending their home school or close to, we don't have a program in every building. So we were very thoughtful on that, and we worked with multiple teams once it got approved to roll this out in the end.
So would you say there's still work to be done, or will we continue to assess the accessibility that students need for special programming? Okay.
Yes. And I believe a few meetings ago, we talked about potentially based on increase of a skills program. So right now, our skills program at the elementary is on the east side of our district and really reexamining to see if we needed potentially a second site. So that is something that is under consideration. But really, the launch of the work last year came from the expressed desire and need and concern from our parents about consistency in program in really kind of coming closer to their home school. So that was also some of the work that the committees had done last year.
Yeah. Well, thank you for acknowledging and addressing that.
Any other questions? Looking forward to the next few months?
We will be back probably every meeting with additional updates.
Yay!
Today was just the love, just the love.
It was just the cheese.
Thank you for the work. I know, I know you've been, the whole team has been doing a lot of work on this, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and the Southbury boundaries are definitely, yeah, so we have to preempt it. Moving to board comments, oh, board committee report. So looks like we had a, our first policy and legislative board committee, equity in learning and instruction and financing facilities. If anybody wants, they can give an overview of those meetings, or if you feel that it's represented well in the documents that are included, then just.
The notes are representative of the policy and legislative committee. We really dove into the recent issue of press and that, you know, most of the recommendations we took, we had some discussions about board member oath and conduct, some fundraising discussions, but all the policies should be there for review for our other board members as well.
And then those items are coming for first read in a minute, so.
Yep.
Anything from the equity and learning and instruction?
Sure. I attended that committee meeting, and I think that the notes are indicative of what was discussed. I think what's really excited about CP career pathway endorsements is that we have like the early we have like the early childhood endorsement and then we have the endorsement, I want to say for the, the education endorsement and I don't want to misspeak in terms of what those endorsements, the grade bands, but something that we did talk about is how do we support students beyond just like getting those endorsements because there are tons of opportunities as they pursue their college career for them to get essentially scholarships, right? Based on these endorsements. And so we talked a little bit about that. We also talked about readying our, our system for the multilingual programming needs and the expansion of that. And maybe there are some subtle things that we can do even this school year in terms of as we recruit. And then I think the last piece of it was just around curriculum and how we are taking a deep dive into our curriculum. And the one thing that I pushed and I will just bring that into the space is that we think about work recovery and how we can anticipate like students misconceptions and then how we're addressing that. Because I think it's really important that students are able to master standards, specifically those standards that are cyclical or there, there's just this direct vertical alignment. So those are some of the things we talked about.
I remember when we first, like within a week of you getting appointed or not appointed, but elected, you had a long discussion.
That's really important for me. Hence why I wanted to be on that committee.
Very heavy topic. And thank you for bringing it up. Yeah. Anything from the finance facilities?
Sure. Again, the notes are pretty representative of what we discussed. Primarily, we did recognize air mark for, for their achievements that was presented today. We did kind of get an update on the repairs at both Oswego and Oswego East. Oswego is well underway with floors being ripped up and, and new flooring being put down. So we're, we're making some progress there. The Performance Arts Center at Oswego East is still kind of in the earlier stages. We're just kind of making sure that we've got everybody in line and everything in line. And then finally, we did talk about the radio installation updates. We've been talking about new radios for, I feel like it's been a couple of years. But anyway, that's finally been accomplished. We have kind of reduced the number of radios we have across the district by about 20% because there was just a whole lot of redundancy. And the really, you know, shocking thing is that all our radios are virtually the same now. And as opposed to having several different brands or several different models and communication among admin, primarily admin staff, et cetera, is, has been streamlined. So what a concept. So that was probably the bulk of it.
Great. I'm going to miss my finance facility.
I know you will.
The radio conversation is fascinating. I'm serious.
We've been talking about it. I feel like forever.
If you, if you ever want to take a day off.
Oh, and the repeaters.
It's all available on YouTube.
All right. Well, next item is 11-2, board member comments. Does anybody have any?
Oh, I do. But you're smiling. Do you want to, do you have something? Oh, do you?
No, I don't have anything. I feel like I've talked enough tonight. That's the reason.
I have two, but I'm going to keep going.
Yeah, and we'd definitely love to hear yours as well. Yeah, it doesn't even have to be anything prepared or anything.
You were just so happy to be here that you were smirking and. That's what, that's what I figured. I have a couple of things that I, that I just wanted to recognize. I mentioned last time that I had been to a couple of the girls' flag football games for both OE and OH. Kelly, I want to, I want to recognize she was being on, you know, the OH team. But there are three things I want to talk about tonight. Number one, I went to the Fox Chase reading night and I have to give major props to Mr. Rinaldi and the staff over there. They had like practically the entire school covered with, with games, with reading sources, with the, with a book fair. They went all out and their attendance was phenomenal. So props to them. I know that there was an awful lot of work that was put into that. So that was, that was kind of fun. Football, boys' football, I have, again, I want to recognize that both OE and OH are 3-0 at this point in time. So they've been pretty successful so far. Got a chance to attend part of the OE game last Friday, which was 77 to nothing. But I left when it was 28 to nothing and raining. But this Friday, OH is playing Yorkville. And what's significant about that is that Yorkville is also 3-0. So should be a good game. If you can, come on out and, and be there for that. And then finally, and I guess I don't give them enough attention, but I have been to two band performances. First of all, I was in Tinley Park with Andrew, or at Andrew High School in Tinley to watch OE's performance. And I got to tell you that the, the band was great. Color Guard especially was amazing. They, Color Guard did win outstanding performance from that particular competition. And then last week I was at Northern where OE was performing and, or excuse me, where OH was performing. Got to get these straight. And OH did come in second in their division, a great performance as well. And I swear to you, as, as the students got out there and started performing, the rain just started to fall on all of them. So extra credit for, to them for performing in the rain. But again, just recognizing all sorts of great effort across the district. And, you know, we really appreciate everything that everyone does. And now I'm done.
Just attended the food pantry distribution last Friday. It was my first time directing traffic. Only got hit. I got close to getting hit once, but it was a lot of fun. We moved the line pretty quick. So anybody, I think that that's once a month, right? And then we're, no matter what happens with old trouble, we're looking at continuing it. So. Attended the DL picnic. Dr. Gogadi was there. Mary Jo was there as well. Lots of dancing, music, conversations and a crate full of puppies. That was, somebody had fostered a dog and went and had seven puppies. They brought him to the picnic. And so that was fun. And then also attended one of the long range facility plan sessions and that was the in-person one at Murphy. So if anybody can attend any of these discussions about the long range facility plan, I think we're going to. Read, right? Please attend.
We'll have many more. Yeah, there'll be lots of opportunities at each school site. We're going to be launching theories throughout.
Okay. Well, yeah, and I think the one that I attended even made the news. So it's, it's, you know, it's a way to get your voices heard for sure. So please attend. Moving on to consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I make a motion to approve all items under consent, including 12.1 minutes from the Board of Education meeting on September 8th, 2025, open and close sessions. 12.2 to acknowledge the FOIA requests received by the district. 12.3 to approve field trips for overnight and/or more than 200 miles. 12.4 to acknowledge the administrator and teacher salary benefits report for fiscal year 25.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a quick question on 12.4, the administrator and teacher salary report. There's, are we, in the, the item, is last year's salary and benefits? Is that what we're?
It's in the rear.
It is in the rear. Okay. I'm just double checking on it. Thank you. That's all.
Yeah, I guess this is a standard report. We have to approve. Yeah.
I was making sure I was looking at the right one.
Okay.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Winmouth?
Aye.
Dr. Muriel?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to 13-1, information, financial statements.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as it stands right now for the month of August, which is the financial that we presented for September, there's nothing out of the ordinary. If you look at the memo that I included, as of August, we've actually received 14.8% more this year in August than we did the same time last year. As far as expenses are concerned, since the budget that we presented that has been approved tonight, we've looked at different ways to do things more efficiently. And that, that seems to be trending right now. So on the revenue side, we receive 14.8 million more than we did on 8%. Sorry, 14.8% more than we did at this time last year. We have, on the expenditure side, we've spent 14.5% less this month in August compared to the same period last year. So we're trending in the right direction. Then as, as it stands at the end of August, the fund balance, we have 85.8 million on the balance. And investment, we have $76.2 million on the investment. And and then the current budget report, if you look at it, we actually, on the revenue side, we're in a pretty good shape as was, was mentioned earlier before. On the expenditure side too, we are within trend. If you look at historically total revenue, on the revenue side, total revenue, historically we had, we should be at 7.8. Year to date, we had 6.4, which is, you know, it's, so I'm historically looking at the last five years. So local revenue, we historically 6%, we had 4.19%. And state revenue, we historically, we had 9.26, we had 8.2. But we did know that we're not getting the same revenue as we did last year. So we just wanted to point that out. And then on the expenditure side too, total expenses, year to date, we had 5.76. Historically, we should be at 7.94. So we're in good shape. Salary and benefits, historically 6.45, we had 5.17. But in all honesty though, we know it's the beginning of this. So August is not a good gauge of what is going to happen the rest of the fiscal year. I just want to. Now, other objects, historically, we should be at 15.52. We are 8.75. The biggest source of that to date has been the bus lease. We should pay for the bus leases out of other objects, which we paid close to 2.6 million dollars in the, the new bus lease that we have. And then we paid for tuition, out of district tuition out of that. So CPI is another thing I want to share. So from August 24 to August 25, as it stands right now, we have CPI index of 2.9%, which is pretty high. It had been trending down, but it seems to, the last couple of months, it was at point 10 basis point in May, 20 basis point. Now it seems to be trending back up again. And we, we monitor that because as the largest source of our revenue, property tax, we use CPI to determine how much we get. As I always point out, it's just the December CPI that we use, which comes out in January. But it's just a good gauge to see what the trend is. And also the things that we buy in the real world is priced CPI impacted. So that's another reason why I think it's very important for us to know what the trend is. And I believe that is, that is all. One thing I would like to point out though, we get the second installment of a property tax payment in September. So it will be reflected in the September report that we present in October, second board meeting in October. So the money that we then get in September, we have to couple with the one that we got in June. We have to make it last till June again, when we get the first installment of the fiscal 2025 levy. So this is also the time, September, is when we start talking about investing in real owners. Because we have a pretty good chunk of money in our reserve bank. We try to make sure that we put it to work and maximize the amount of yield that we get without gambling. We don't do anything risky. Our goal is always to preserve capital or do it in a smart way where we can get the most return for our money.
I have a quick question on the fee collection rates. I just noticed, this is just a wondering because I noticed that the activities were already above the collection rate that we were at.
Now, the activity funds, we actually, we have no input with that. Activity funds are funds that are raised by the schools. They're used in the school. We have oversight over them, but it doesn't impact us financially because they belong exclusively to the school. We just have to make sure they're spending appropriately.
Yeah, I think I'm talking about something different. I'm talking about the collection rates for the activities.
The, okay, the fees collection rate.
The fee collection rate. So in activities, for example, I know it's been a struggle to collect all of our rates. Or I noticed though that, for example, our, it makes sense that like the instructional fees were at 43%. Last year we ended at 73%, but the activities were already beating like the rate as we did from last year. So I don't know if there's been a change in practice and how we're collecting those or if.
I think what, what, what it is, is in the beginning of the school year, people tend to pay their fees.
Yeah.
And then it kind of peters off as the year goes on.
More activities get added to the account.
So I was, I was, I was debating whether to include August. Because August is an outline. We've only been in school for a couple of weeks when this report was generated. But just, just to be consistent, since we shared every month, our school is in session, we decide to include it. But it's a really, really bad data point. I just want to point that out. So I wouldn't read too much into it.
Yeah, I was just wondering. It just stood out to me.
Appreciate your context.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. 13.2.
Thank you, Mr. President.
First read on a bunch of policies.
Yep. So today, our policy and legislative committee is bringing forward first read. These are policies from press issue 119 that was released in 2025. A majority of the changes that you can see in the attachment, which are available through the redline version, focus on minor wording changes, legal references and cross references. But I would like to highlight four policies from that list where we're talking about some additional changes. So the first one that I would like to highlight is 280, which is our board member oath and conduct. If you take a look at the top of page three in the redline version, the recommendation from the policy and legislative committee is to add the statement that is being recommended by press, which states, "A board member who fails to abide by the oath of office or the code may be subject to action by the board, including but not limited to formal censure and/or referral to the regional superintendent for removal of office under board policy 260." So that would be added at the end of the policy. So that would be one change that would be recommended to this policy.
What page is that, Dr. Kincaid?
It's at the top of page three. So it's under policy 2:80. The next two policies that I'd like to highlight is 740, which is non-public school students. And then also 7325, which is student fundraising activities. While the committee is recommending these two for first read and approval at our next meeting for the recommended legal and cross-reference change, those two policies, we will be bringing back to the policy committee and reviewing the policy. and reviewing the policy, first looking at the administrative procedures, and then potentially bringing additional recommendations to those two policies. So, again, we are recommending right now in 740 and 7325 that the recommendations in Press Issue 119, referring to the legal and cross-references, are approved, because we do have a timeline for the Press Issue 119. Those are two that we anticipate might come back to the full board for review in the next few months. The last policy that we're kind of putting in the same bucket is 880, which is Gifts to District. Again, we are recommending it to move forward for the legal and cross-reference changes recommended by Press. But the committee discussed additional legal guidance and potential re-review of the Policy 880 for Gifts to District. So, in terms of the request during second read for action at our next meeting, the only substantial change recommended by Press is to Policy 2:80, which is the Board Member Oath and Conduct. And then the remaining changes would be, again, minor wording, which you can see in the Redline, legal references or cross-references, with, with potential re-review, which we will, we would bring back through a first read and a second read, if there's additional recommendations, to 740, 7325, and 880.
Can you repeat that? No, just kidding.
Any, did I miss any? Any questions?
I, I do, unless anybody else. So, 280. So, that was recommended in Press.
Correct.
To include.
Verbatim.
Okay.
So, we had default and not included. So, we do have the choice of recommending that it be included or not be included. We did not change any of the recommended verbiage from Press, but we do have to decide whether or not to include that statement or not. The committee decided to bring forth the statement as a, as a whole, as inclusion within that policy. But the full board would have to decide, yes, we want to include it, or no, we do not. That's what we have to submit to Press.
Thanks, Dr.
And so, everybody on the Policy Committee was in favor of including that?
You're talking 280?
280, yes.
Board member fails to abide, oath of office, so on and so forth.
Yeah, we did have a discussion on that. Yeah, we agree. You have other thoughts that you want to share?
Well, I, I Well, I just, I want to make sure that we're not unique, you know, in that. And that we just treat it very, it's, it looks like it has to go to the Regional Superintendent. It wouldn't be something that we would unilaterally be able to decide, it would have to also. Because I don't know what the saying, you know, we, we can have, you know, disagreements isn't a reason, right, you know?
Right.
And so, I just don't want it to be abused, I guess. So, but there are safeguards for that as well.
Okay. My question is more so around 7140. I think, Dr. Kincaid, you talked about the board would essentially approve this policy in the next two weeks, but then we will revisit this in terms of protocols to put in place for this? Search and seizure?
Or 7140?
Yeah. That's not what I heard.
No, it's 37:40? 7:325 and 8:80. So, the changes to 7140, there is a minor language change in the first section to denote on-school property, and then there are both legal reference change and cross-references. So, there is no substantial change to the policy. So, then, there is no, at this point, recommendation to a change to the students' rights and responsibilities.
Okay. I guess what would concern me about the policy is just parents being notified, but I do see some language around parents being notified in the event.
Yes, and that is also detailed in our students' rights and responsibilities.
Okay, perfect.
Anything else? All right. Moving on to Action Item 14.1, Approval of Fiscal Year 26 Budget. I have a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve Fiscal Year 26 Budget as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Next action item, 14-2, Approval of Personnel Report. I have a motion, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the personnel report as discussed and presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope, all right.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?